This meeting is ordered at 6:00 PM. The date is June 11, 2019. And we are in the Joe N. Idlet Junior Teacher Education Center. And the purpose of this meeting is our regular business meeting. At this time, if you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We always miss our junior ROTC at this time. Okay, Board members, are there any items that the Board members wish to move from consent to action? I wanted to, if we could pull our minutes that we had gotten on... Specifically, there is a question I had about the April 16th in 2009.
It would be number three, F3.
F3. So I'm going to pull F3. If there's no other, I need a motion for approval.
I move that we adopt the orders of the day as amended.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Shossis? No? No? Any discussion on that? Board members? We're good? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Five zero. All right. At this time, it's... I'd like to recognize Dr. Moxley to present our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sorek, and members of the Board. I'd like to introduce Kristin Maddox to come forward. We have a short video on some school initiatives, and then it's our pleasure and honor to recognize our Veteran of the Month. So Kristin will do the honors tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Moxley. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a very special video for you. And I'm going to ask that Ms. Joanne Pagano, please come to the podium. Our video is about the A+ Art Program. And through the assistance of various donors, it's a collaboration between the School District of Indian River County and the Vero Beach Museum of Art. And it's an after-school program that caters to students on the autism spectrum, who may not otherwise have an opportunity to express themselves artistically. And Joanne will tell you a little bit more about this program before the video.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Moxley. This video was produced on behalf of the School District and the Vero Beach Museum of Art. It has been a labor of love for us. Where every Monday, we meet with a group of students from Vero Beach High School, some from Sebastian, some who are out of school. And we work together to initiate and instill in them a set of work skills. It's different because the work skills are learned through art. And this is an inherent opportunity for them to realize that they can learn, but learn in a different manner. So that when they get to the job, they know what it is, left to right, up and down, around, and a host of different skills that have been... they've worked on in their art class. So with that said, I'd like to show you what we've been working on the last year.
How do you design a program for so many diverse personalities? The A+ Art Program started as an idea about three years ago. It developed very organically. One of my colleagues at the museum, she asked, "What can we do for young people with autism?" And I said, "I don't know." The young people, children, services were plentiful. But for teens and young adults, there was really nothing, or very little, available. So that's when we said, "Let's fill the void." It was a pilot program in the first year. The museum also sponsored some autism sensitivity training for the entire staff and volunteers. And what we learned is that if you've met one person with autism, you've met one person with autism. And we decided that we could expand the program with the help of the Indian River School District and Joanne Pagano's dedication to actually couple, in a unique way, work-based learning skills in an art museum setting.
We are working with special needs students. And we need to look at how they best can learn job skills. We have been very fortunate to be able to partner with the Vero Beach Museum of Art to allow our students an opportunity to learn these marvelous job skills that they may not learn on a job site. And what our students are doing is that they're learning art, and they're learning job skills in tandem. Counting, measuring, sight movement, everything that's used on the job, they learn from a different aspect and then can transpose it into a work-functional program.
Its etiquette, its social skills, these are clearly skills that would relate to any job.
Communication is the essence of teaching job skills. And the more communication skills they have, the more they're enabled to be able to answer questions and ask questions and advocate for themselves. When ESE students gain exposure from outside activities, it's a more functional way and a more inherent way of them being able to learn respective job skills.
The A+ Art Program Day is they arrive, they have responsibilities, they get their badges, they sign in, people get assigned jobs and responsibilities. That's part of their work-based learning skills program. We start with the circle up after everybody's signed in and has their name badges on. And we have our "Hello Everybody" song. Hello, everybody!
It's nice to see you! Hello, everybody! It's nice to see you!
And they love that. They're smiling, they feel engaged, they feel connected. So after we do the circle up, we have everybody introduce themselves. We introduce the theme of the day, and we have a guiding question. We have a movement activity to get them physically engaged, so that those who are nonverbal have an opportunity to express themselves physically. That can be improv, it could be to rhythm or music. Then we move into the art museum and look at the selected works that supports the theme for the day. We have snack. We go to the art studio, and that's the creative exercise for the day that supports the theme and the artwork that they saw in the museum. And then we have our closing celebration. We circle up, everybody shows what they've done, describes a little bit about what they did and why, and then we applaud. Everyone gets celebrated.
A lot of the students who have come to the program are participating in an after-school activity. The parents are kept at a distance. And yet, they participate when they take the student home and reinforce what they've learned in the activity, through the activity. Students must participate on their own. It's criterion for being in the program. And they do. And you know, they come, some participate at a lower level, some participate at a very high level, and function well. Some, we need to encourage more. Our volunteers are incredibly talented. They participate along with our students. They give so much of their time, and we are amanently grateful to them. This program could not exist without them.
When the students enter the studio for the art-making component of the program, they get to interpret what they've seen in the museum and express it in their own unique artistic way. What I love about this program is that it really utilizes our creativity and our passion for education. As a museum, it's part of our mission to enrich the lives of others through art. Part of the theme is around one of the works in our collection or at our ongoing exhibitions. So that they are able to be introduced to new art, to learn about abstract expressionism, or impressionism, or three-dimensional work. So we always have a vocabulary list that we try to expand. We're really utilizing verbal and nonverbal skills. We're using music, movement, visualization. We really try to bring all of the expressive arts into it, so that we meet the needs of such a diverse group. The program develops the students' interpersonal skills, I think, because it really opens up a wide range of people that they get to interact with. They also have an opportunity to work with each other under unique circumstances.
Probably the most important job skill that they learn are autistic students begin to take away excellent communication skills. And those communication skills are not only job skills, but they're life skills. I have no other words to describe it. It truly is a labor of love. You have to love being here. And more importantly, you have to see the benefit of this program for our students.
Creativity is a real vulnerable thing to do, to really express yourself openly. And we've created, through our programming, an opportunity of comfort and safety, so that they can move, they can sing, they can laugh, they can paint, without ego. And it's a really beautiful thing to see. Being proud of something that they've created, having that ownership, is a lovely thing to see, and it is joyful, pure joy.
I would like to thank the people that inspired us to do this. Heather Clark and Randy Hunt, who were very supportive. Mr. O'Keefe, I see you here. And we... He would... All have worked together to help this program get off the ground. But I'd also like to publicly thank the Vero Beach Museum of Art.
Thank you.
So the first board meeting of every month is one of my favorites because we get to honor a new Veteran of the Month. And tonight, we have Nicole Hagenson, who is an Air Force and Florida Air National Guard Veteran, who served from 2001 to 2009. She is currently the Director of IT Enterprise Project Management for Orchid Insurance, which is a small business headquartered in Vero Beach. Nicole has lived in Vero Beach since 2009 with her fiancee, Carrie Hagenson, an Indian River County firefighter, and their five children. Her oldest two, Kelsey and Alyssa, have finished their first year in college at the University of Alabama and Santa Fe College in Gainesville. Her younger children, Riley, Kayden, and Piper, attend Imagine of South Vero and will be going into eighth, sixth, and second grades. Nicole has a bachelor's degree from the University of North Florida in Computer Information Science and a Master of Business Administration from the University of Central Florida. Nicole has been an active member of the veteran community, leading an effort to clean and repair veteran grave sites in Indian River County. She is also on the Board and the Secretary for the Next Generation Veterans in Indian River County, which are veterans who have served during the Iraq and Afghanistan wars. She is active in raising funds for the Words From War Monument that will be built near Veterans Memorial Island in Vero Beach, which is a tribute to those who have served after August 4, 1990. Tonight, we'd like to call Nicole Hagenson up to be recognized as our Veteran of the Month.
Thank you to the community and the school board for this recognition. As always, I cannot take this recognition upon myself. It's really a team effort to do what we do in the community as veterans and as part of our... The organization I'm a part of, which is the Next Generation Veterans of Indian River County. So I'd like to thank them for their support. We also have Michelle here from Gold Star Mothers, who surprised me. I'm a little emotional that she's here. And I couldn't do any of this without that organization, without the Gold Star Mothers, and without the community. So thank you very much.
So I'm going to ask Nicole to take a picture, and I'm going to ask her family and friends to come up and take a picture with her as well. Okay? All right. Can we... Yeah, just let's center just a little bit. There we go. All right, everyone. One, two, and three. Okay? And Nicole's family and friends, who I would like to come up. Okay, everyone. Ready? One, two, and three. Oh, that's so pretty. Thank you so much, Nicole. And that's all for our presentations tonight.
Okay. So we're going to move on to citizen input. I'd like to recognize Dr. Moxley before we go into our... We have three individuals that would like to speak tonight. So I'm going to...
Sure.
Do you want to go ahead and speak now?
I can. Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mrs. Sorek. Board members, right before we went into our board meeting this morning, I was made aware through an email of a letter that 200 of our employees received regarding a change in their insurance plan. And I know that you have received some follow-up correspondence, and I certainly want to apologize to you that you were caught off guard, as I was. I have taken a few minutes in between our last meeting and this meeting to kind of get a little bit of background. And I wanted to assure you, as well as the 200 employees that may have received that letter, that I will be researching this further tomorrow. But there was some notification, and I know our Health Insurance Committee received this in April, about a change in... And something that needed to be researched and reviewed. I don't have a lot of information about it, since I haven't had much time to look at it. But I will assure you that I will become very informed on it tomorrow, and we will look to see what the issue is and the best resolution for that. So again, my apologies that you were blindsided by that. And we will take care of this by researching more tomorrow. Thank you.
Dr. Moxley, when will you... Will you notify the Board what your findings are through email?
I will certainly do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So next, we have Garrett Rue. And if you'd like to come on up, our citizen input time is three minutes. So if... At the end, you hear the timer, and it's still... Just wrap up your sentence, okay? Thank you.
So, yes, I'm Garrett Rue. I'm the automotive instructor at Sebastian River High School. I've been teaching the district for seven years. Thank you for that. This is what I'm speaking on, is the dual credit. For myself and my wife, and I wrote something down, because I'll just babble on if not. So, good evening, Dr. Moxley and Board members. I wanted to thank Ms. Verenborg for already returning my email. But tonight, I want to make you all aware of an issue or hardship many employees and families received yesterday in the mail. I am bringing this forward as an issue of insurance increase for dual-credit employees. For those of you who are unaware, dual-credit employees are spouses who are both employed by the district and have received a different rate for insurance. For my wife and I individually, this is more than doubling our rate, which doesn't include the increase that we're already going to have with our unborn child that is coming in July, which now will increase that exponentially over 500% what we pay currently. I reached out to the Benefits Department today and was told the increase is due to the fact that we are out of compliance with the Affordable Care Act. I questioned their response as many school districts, St. Lucie, Martin, Marion, and other government entities offer dual-credit options, including some that just went through open enrollment in the last couple of months. I wonder how they are able to afford this, or be able to offer this, and not be out of compliance. My wife and I have both worked for the district for the past seven years. During this time, we have both been highly effective. I have left the automotive industry as a technician for three main reasons. The first, being the benefits. Second... Or sorry, no, the first really is to give back to the students. I really enjoy what I do. Second is for the benefits, and the third is to spend time with family. So if you take two of those three things away from me, it's hard, as an employee, to stay with the district. I asked the school board and superintendent to look into this matter and how other districts and government entities are able to make it work, dual-credit employees, and reconsider before open enrollment, because I'm afraid the school district will lose many other employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cannon? And then after Mrs. Cannon, we have Mrs. Sanchez. Okay?
Good evening. Liz Cannon, Indian River County Education Association. I reviewed today's workshop regarding class size average versus school-wide average. I do appreciate Dr. Moxley contacting me regarding this information, and I also appreciate the Board members who acknowledged the union's participation in this. To answer your question, as a teacher, I will always support smaller class sizes. The smaller the class, the more individualized attention I can give to my students. But this discussion touches on something I was already planning on speaking to this evening: job postings and allocations. On June 12, 2018, the personnel recommendations on the consent agenda included 15 instructional transfers, 13 instructional employment recommendations. On tonight's agenda, there are zero instructional transfers, two instructional employment recommendations. Also, on the district openings, there are currently only six instructional positions posted. I realize that Dr. Moxley stated that there are potentially 17 elementary vacancies that will be frozen at this time. Only two of the six instructional positions are middle and high school. When I contacted HR about the limited positions posted and the shortened posting times, I was told, "Each unit posts their positions, and they must go through the requisition process first before it can be posted. If there are open positions not yet posted, it is possible the school has not yet done the requisition process, or the process is incomplete. But in either case, the process is system-driven, so all positions are posted following the requisition approval process." Additionally, so that we are compliant with federal, state, and DSEG order, we only post for five days. Prior to this, we've always posted until filled. After that, if a qualified candidate is not found, the process repeats and new requisition posting. Posting positions are not extended as such, and we are reposting the process. In checking the personnel recommendations since January, we have approximately 45... 43 teachers retiring or resigning. I know that there were approximately 35 teachers non-renewed. That leaves us with 78 potential openings. With 11 positions offered, as stated today, which only two of which have been on the board agenda, 17 positions frozen, that leaves potentially 50 vacant positions. Why are these jobs not posted? What are the federal, state, and DSEG order requirements that are preventing us from posting until filled? Since there seems to be a delay in posting these positions, will there be an extension to the July 15 deadline for transfers? There seems to be a lack of transparency regarding the job openings in Indian River. Please explain this confusion and post the jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanchez? Mrs. Rosario, can you translate?
Oh, my gosh, my translation...
Yes, yes.
Do we have a translator?
Usted tiene alguien? Okay, muy bien. Muy bien. She was working on it. They were already working on it.
Okay.
Mrs. Sanchez requested a translator earlier today. And I think Nancy was already working on it, so they have someone.
Okay.
If someone doesn't show up, then I'll step up. Are you doing it?
She's going to... She passed the letter anyway.
We're going to do the best we can.
Let me do it.
Would you like to?
I think I'm better than you.
She hasn't written down, correct?
She does, yes. And we translated the best that...
Mrs. Rosario, you could stay up here. And then, after she reads her letter, you can translate it into... From reading it. That's how we did it last time.
Si, yo trato lo más que puedo.
Or, did you have a better?
What do you have? De nada. Buenas tardes, Dr. Moxley, y miembros del school board presente. Mi nombre es Laura Sanchez, madre de estudiantes. Número de identificación, les vamos a poner así, 172953 y 172954. Mi presencia nuevamente aquí es porque nadie me ha contactado para resolver situación académica de estudiantes 172954. Como expliqué la vez pasada, no tiene un IEP, no tiene acomodaciones ni servicios relacionados. Espero se resuelva la situación a través del estado y se me comunique de manera adecuada. Respecto al estudiante 172953, pido una evaluación independiente de terapia ocupacional, ya que desde el 2016 se le han hecho evaluaciones, ha habido proceso de mediación, conflicto de interés, etcétera. También pido, solicito habilidades sociales y educación física adaptada. También algo que les quisiera comentar a ustedes, que no soy la única persona que no recibe respuesta al departamento de estudiantes excepcionales. Hay una madre de dos estudiantes con hiperactividad y autismo, uno de ellos y el segundo con hiperactividad. Y ha habido problemas de comportamiento, pero no se le realiza ninguna evaluación. En nuestra comunidad de freshman que necesita ayuda y que se nos escuche, por favor. Gracias. Gracias a usted. Está bien. She says, "My name is Laura Sanchez. I am the mother of students..." Number... She mentioned the student's number. I don't think we need to mention the student ID number, numbers. "My presence here, again, is because nobody has contacted me to resolve my students' academic situation." When you do not have... When you do not have an IEP, but you do not... And you do not have accommodations or related services, I am contacting the school board consistently for these issues. I hope there will be situations throughout the state. I hope there will be... I think this was... As I have explained in the past, we have still not obtained an IEP. We have still not obtained accommodations. We have still not obtained services related for my children. I hope that when you receive my situation, or the information for my situation, that you will have someone contact me as soon as possible. With respect to my students, I ask for an evaluation, an independent evaluation for occupational therapy, for other services. occupational therapy, for other services, and for mediation, and to resolve any conflicts. I would also like to comment that you, that I am not the only person who is in this situation. There is another mother of two students with hyperactivity and autism, one of them, one of them with either hyperactivity or autism, and two with hyperactivity. And there have been problems of behavior, behavioral issues, and no evaluation has been made. It is our Felsmer community that needs help and that we are heard, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did the best that I could.
That was good. Thank you. Is there a certification on that? Is it this child from?
¿Hice bien, señora? ¿Usted entiende? ¿Hay algo más que olvidé o que no dije? ¿Todo está bien? Okay. Voy a hablar para usted después, okay?
Yes.
All right.
Mrs. Zork, would it be fair to say that Dr. Moxley will be in contact with Mrs. Sanchez?
I need to get her contact information.
Yes.
I'll have the appropriate staff work with me on that one.
Dr. Moxley va a llamarte pronto, posible mañana, para hablar a cierta de su situación. Okay?
Okay. So that concludes our citizen input. Thank you, Mrs. Maddox and Mrs. Rosario, for that. At this time, let's see. I need approval to, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Yeah, I'm just gonna point on our consent agenda to something really remarkable that we don't see every day, which is a donation, which is a combined set of donations from the Rotary Club of Sebastian Recreation Foundation, to a variety of Sebastian River High School sports, including 4,000 for wrestling, 4,000 for track and field, 4,000 for girls' basketball, 1,000 for boys' lacrosse, and 1,500 for boys' soccer, totaling $14,500 towards sports activities at Sebastian High School, which I think deserves a shout-out. So just want to acknowledge Sebastian Rotary for that. Thank you.
Love the donations are fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any other?
I just wanted to point out, Dr. Moxley and I had a conversation yesterday. She knows how I feel about this. When you go through all these fire inspections, you look for commonalities, and she's going to address those. And I think hopefully we'll see maybe some of that knocked down a little bit. Thank you.
I want to say thank you to Mrs. Esplin for getting all these minutes of hours and hours of our board meetings put into minutes. And I know it's taken a, we've had a busy month, last couple of months, and thank you. I know you've been working overtime to get it, get it caught up, so thank you so much.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0.
Mrs. Zork?
Yes.
May I introduce one new assistant principal?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Before we go on, you just approved a brand-new assistant principal to the administrative ranks, and I'd like to introduce to you Robert Riskin, who is the new assistant principal at Vero Beach High School. And I see Mr. O'Keefe is here to support him. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. And just wanted to thank everybody for this tremendous opportunity to serve the school board in this new capacity as an administrator of Vero Beach High School. Wanted to thank Mr. Sean O'Keefe and other people in this room who have helped shape this journey to get me where I am today. Look forward to continuing to find tradition over at Vero Beach High School. And again, just thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, lots. Go Indians.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, y'all have my two. Y'all have necessary stuff?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Zork, just let this assistant principal know that three board members' children will be at the school next year. So, we will see you, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna pre-warn you ahead of time. One of my, my children's a tattletale, so she'll be in your office quite a bit to tattle.
And she's gonna kill you now.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There, although we have approved the consent agenda with Consent B under Staffing, there's been a change for number seven. We've just approved it, but the change happened so quickly before we were able to change anything in our packet. How do we move forward on this? Do we address it? Do we just let it go?
That person will be in that position until they make an official change.
Okay, okay. So there's no?
No, there is no.
No change right now? Perfect. Thank you. I just needed some clarity on that. Appreciate it.
All right. So we're moving on to our action agenda. Let's see. I am all out of sorts here.
You're doing Consent F3. You pulled the minutes.
Okay. So we're gonna go to, I just had a, I wanted to ask a question, and I apologize, because we were in our meeting yesterday. I was gonna get clarity on this. In our minutes, because it was a special called meeting, and it was under normal circumstances, to make sure that we cross every T and dot every I, so we're all covered on this, are we supposed to list specifically the three board members that called the meeting, or is that not necessary to put it on here?
Mrs. Zork, I believe this reflects what the agenda reflected. I don't know what, how the decision was made to have the agenda look that way, but I think this reflects what was on the agenda that was posted. So it's, it's, it's fine from a legal perspective, but it's a local decision, the kind of details that you want to put in.
Okay.
The kind of details that you want to put in?
Yes, put, to put in your minutes.
Shouldn't the details be exact to, I hadn't caught this, so I'm glad that you brought it up? Shouldn't the details be accurate to what was, what had occurred? So if two board members did not call the meeting, shouldn't it reflect part of the discussion was that two board members did not actually call the meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. You're talking about the description of perhaps the discussion and the various items. You can put as much detail of that discussion as you wish into your minutes. There's no legal requirement for it to be verbatim, but you can include the details that you feel are necessary.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're protecting all our board members and how we're noting this, so, so if you don't feel that it's necessary to note who the three that called the meeting?
I think she's made that pretty clear.
It's a recorded meeting, so I think that the minutes reflect what the recording was, and I'm fine with that. Anybody can go back and see the recording, so.
I don't think that's what...
Perhaps I'm not understanding the question.
I don't think, I think, I think, Mrs. Zork, are you referring to the original, I'm trying to, the original agenda that we had in front of us? Let me get there, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just know that this is something that we need to make sure that we know who called the meeting, and it's not noted here on who called the meeting. And if we're gonna approve these minutes, I feel it's important to note that. Based on...
But I think what you're suggesting, what you're saying is because this was a specially-called meeting, that we have to have, should have, who called a specially-called meeting? That's what I, I'm hearing.
Exactly.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Because it wasn't a regular business meeting, it was a special-called meeting.
So is it okay here if we note that Mrs. Barrenborg, Mrs. Justice, and Mrs. Rosario called for the special meeting? That's all I want to put in here? Because, isn't that the three that called the meeting?
That's the three that were on the agenda. But again, I come back to personally, I did not call that meeting. But I understand what you're saying. So I did not call that meeting. We, you know, we did talk about it. I know that it's recorded. I do, I will support the names on there, but we have to make mention, because it was a special-called meeting, we have to make mention that in the minutes, maybe Mrs. Esplin can be sure to include in there, that this board member did not call that meeting. I mean, we're writing it down, because the way that it was explained is that the first three board members who responded were the ones in which Mrs. Esplin added. That's what, that's what we came up with at the end of all of that. However, to clarify once again, I was not asked to call the meeting with Mrs. Justice who called it. I was not asked to call the meeting with Mrs. Justice. I was just asked, will I be present? So that's different. Do you know what I mean? So we're at a kind of quandary here.
So, can I make a suggestion? We had the meeting, we discussed it at the meeting. We noticed that there was some confusion about how special meetings get called and, and what information gets stated in those. But I'm afraid that if we continue to do this now, we're gonna wind up belaboring that again. And, and in the end, we all had the meeting and we were here. So if anybody really wants to go back and track that, they can find it out. But I'm a little concerned that if we go down that path now...
No, I don't want to go down that path. I just wanted to make sure that the three individuals were noted here.
Right, but, but the, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that there's some, there's some confusion, there's some, not confusion and not dissension, there's some disagreement about how that happened and who were the three board members. So if we, there were three board members noted, one of whom says, but she wasn't really calling the meeting, she agreed to attend the meeting. And if we go down the path of trying to resolve that now, I'm not sure that that's gonna be our best use of time. So perhaps either we can pull this for the moment, not approve it for the moment, resolve that with Mrs. Esplin and Mrs. DeGressor, however we do that. But I'm afraid now, if we go into that, we're gonna get into, it's gonna take us off track.
I just think that was the point, but I agree with you.
But I think we don't, but let's, let's, let's kind of keep working together and moving on. I think we've been doing an excellent job at that. I think as we've been moving forward, we've been becoming increasingly cohesive, and I'd like to see us continue that path. And I'm a little afraid that this is gonna take us down a path where...
We just have, as the board chair, I have to make sure that we're doing everything accordingly, and that's why I'm bringing it up. You know, I'm sorry, it's an uncomfortable conversation. I just want to make sure that every board member up here is protected.
Sure. And because the way it was called, it said three board members called it, only two of whom acknowledged that they were willing to call it. So we're gonna have to resolve that if we start putting it in.
Said that they did call it, not didn't.
So if we're gonna go down that path, then we're gonna get into resolving it, because what I'm hearing is that Mrs. Rosario does not want to be noted as somebody who called the meeting.
Well, Mrs. Barrenborg mentioned that at the meeting as well.
And since my name's being thrown out there, let me just respond. I think when you're looking at this, it doesn't say, it just says the meeting was called and, and to order by Chairman Zork, which is true. We had the meeting, which is true. When you get down the action agenda, A, discussion of potential action regarding April 10th letter, and then it has ESQ, which is Esquire? Okay. And then our three names. Did I agree to meet? Yes, I don't mind my name there. I agreed to meet. I, I, I think that's semantics at this point. Let's get, let's move on. The minutes are fine. It doesn't say who asked for the meeting here in the minutes, so it's not like we're having to spell that out. But again, recordings are there for that reason. Anybody can go back and pull a recording.
Can we call the question? I'd like to call the question on this and move forward, please.
Please.
I'd like to, I'd like to pull this so I can make sure we have clarity from the superintendent and the attorney, so that we're covered on this, all of us.
Then why don't we pull it, and then we'll come back to it at another time, is that...
I agree. Thank you. All right. And I do apologize if it's uncomfortable. I just want to make sure we're all, all protected. All right, so we're gonna move on to Action A, Approval of 2018-19 Annual Fire Safety, Casualty, and Sanitation Report.
No, we've approved our consent agenda. We're moving on to Action Item A. That was on consent.
Sorry.
Achieve 3,000.
Been a long couple of days.
Mine is out of order. Sorry about that. Thank you. All right. So Action Agenda, Item A, Approval Renewal of Achieve 3,000 Reading Software for Grades 9 through 12.
Yes, thank you very much, board members. This Achieve 3,000, we did have a work session on this particular item on May 28. This is a computer-based program that supports students in intensive reading, particularly when they score a Level 1 or a Level 2 in grades 9 through 12. So this is a high school progress monitoring tool. It includes a pre-intermum and post-test that provides real-time reporting with intervention and progress monitoring. Achieve 3,000 does help teachers identify gaps in students' learning and determine where students are ready for acceleration. The cost to the district is $4,450. Insurance is in, has been approved and in place, and I do recommend approval.
Okay. I need a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Justice?
No, ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Stampier and your team and the teachers that came and spoke to us. I appreciate that. That enlightened me a lot, so that I felt very confident that I can move forward on this, so thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. All right. Moving on to B, Approval of Raise for Extended-Day Staff and Coordinators Effective July 1, 2019. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, thank you, board members. The extended-day program, this is an enterprise fund. It is self-funded by the parents who use the extended-day program. This is before and after-school care. We have this at all elementary schools in the district, serving kindergarten through fifth grade. Coordinators and staff members there have not had an increase in their day, their hourly rate for 11 years, and staff for four years. They did do a salary review comparison, and they looked at Martin and Brevard Counties for their extended-day programs. We want to be competitive, so you're going to see that this agenda item provides coordinators for an increase to $14 per hour, staff to $11 per hour, and our student workers remain the same at whatever minimum wage is. There is no cost to the district because of it being an enterprise self-funded program. I do recommend approval.
I need a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All right.
No, ma'am.
Discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to C, Approval of Continuation for Work-Based Learning Experience for Transition Students with Disabilities, 2019-2020. 2019-20 School Year.
Yes, board members, this is a contract with Volk Rehab and this is to create and/or expand work-based learning experience for our transitioned students with disabilities. It is for the 2019-20 School Year. Students that participate in this type of work-based learning experience, they work on developing work skills, behaviors, work tolerance needed to plan for and achieve successful employment after high school. The, through this contract with Volk Rehab, the school district will be able to provide two full-time and one part-time employment specialists. They will be funded via a vendor reimbursement process based on individual student outcomes. So student outcomes are very much an important part of this. The total budgeted amount is approximately two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Incoming funds based on student outcomes will be used to provide the necessary materials and resources or supplies to support the program. I do recommend approval. It's a wonderful program for our students with disabilities.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you, I think it's an important program, I'm glad that we're moving forward, so.
Thank you, thank you to the staff.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to remind Dr. Moxley that the certificate of liability date on the expiration.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I did double-check on that, that is already tagged. When that comes close to the expiration, it will be reinstated and then the date will then roll over for the next year.
Okay.
I did verify that, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Moxley, I, in the, the amount that we have this year, two hundred and ninety-three thousand that we had budgeted, are we taking, you know, and I'm looking ahead, are we including in that two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two full-time and one part-time, the salary and benefits in that amount?
That is my understanding and I'm seeing a confirmation yes from Ms. Clark.
Okay. So with that, that, that basically takes a huge part of that, correct?
Yes, it does.
That, and then?
And that's because of the resources of staff working with students.
Okay.
Because it is work-based.
Okay, and then we, how much, do we know how much that leaves after we pay salaries?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Clark to come up and address that for us so we can have exact information. Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Good evening, board members. I, I would be happy to get the entire budget for you. We have presented the budget attached for the 1920 School Year. However, I could give you updated information with regards to expenditures this year and broken down by salaries and what other purchases we made based on last year's budget. That is not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I did, I have a question about the date on here, the school year, 2018-2019. Since we're now done with our 2018-19 School Year, did we?
Yes, this contract is for 1920 and we did update that on the agenda for tonight. And I think that was read into the record if I heard Mrs. Zork correctly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Moving on to D, Approval Renewal of iReady Software for Reading and Math for Grades K through 12 for 2019-20. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, thank you, board members. We did have this in work session this afternoon with an update. The staff did go back and work. We had a survey, sixty-two teachers did respond to that. Using that reflective information, that plan was developed. I think one of the biggest components of the plan is the reduction in the testing in the spring with, for grades 4 through 8. That May administration of that test will no longer be required. We will use the FSA for that end of the year. The other situation is with K, K through 3, because that is attached to the teacher evaluation system and there is no growth in the FSA for 3rd grade. And we use that for 3rd grade reading, for summer camp, those kinds of data points. That will remain for, for, and iReady will be used for that. We also did include flexibility, that we are not mandating that every classroom, every, in every elementary school and every middle school must do forty-five minutes. We're providing flexibility to teachers and schools that that needs to be given so the teachers can make the sound educational judgment based on the needs of each individual student that they're using that for. There will be an FAQ put out to help with best practices and with implementation. And the plan does recognize the training that is involved there for both administrators and teachers. I do recommend this particular contract.
Okay, need a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, Mrs. Justice and then Mrs. Rosario. Mrs. Justice?
Yes, thank you very much. I wanna thank Dr. Moxley, Ms. Stampier, and her staff for an excellent presentation today regarding iReady and for taking a step back and looking at the program and seeing how we could best serve students in our classrooms. I'm impressed with the student-focused decision-making I've seen from Dr. Moxley and all of our staff. And I'm grateful as a parent and as a school board member, this is, again, common sense decision-making, doing what's best for kids. So thank you very much. I'm happy to support this tonight.
Mrs. Rosario?
Likewise, I wanted to thank Dr. Moxley and Mrs. Stampier on listening to the board and to parents and to all of the concerns that many of our constituents had regarding this. I'm, I'm happy to see a reduction in the testing in the classroom. My main concern, as I restated at our last meeting, was that we were heavily relying on, you know, a computer. And I wanted to return back to basic teaching one-on-one. So I'm, I'm glad that we are still going to use this as a diagnostic tool, but it is not going to be the sole function to drive instruction, nor are we going to be so heavily dependent on it. So I am, I'm happy to see the changes here, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I will say thank you as well. I don't wanna go all the way back to teaching only, good balance is good. But you did mention that teachers were gonna be able to have input in a, a survey link.
Yes.
Could we also have that for parents, available for parents?
Sure.
Okay, because there have been some parent input and questions about this and I think it's only fair that parents know where that's located and they can also get their input about instruction that's happening with their own students.
Great idea, we can add that to the plan.
Thank you.
I wanna, wanna reiterate that the fact that we are reducing the amount of testing by not having the, the end of the year after the FSA for the grades 4 through 8, which I think is fantastic. Also, the flexibility is given back or is re, reconfirmed, so I appreciate that. And so I am ready to approve this tonight with those, those exceptions that were made today, so I appreciate that. To Mrs. Stampier for getting the survey put together as quickly as you got that out there to get some feedback. I know it was right at the end of the school year, but you did have, I think, sixty-three respondents to that. So I appreciate that for you listening to us and taking quick action like you did on this. So I'm ready to approve this and I know that we have to have a, a testing tool. And this year, I'm, I'm not ready to switch to a whole new testing system. I say, let's go ahead and use this again because we know with the standards changing, that iReady's gonna have to come up to date with the new Florida standards anyways. Have we heard from iReady if they're prepared to do that?
The requirement is that the constituents and groups be able to have a proposal for the governor in January of 2020. So no, there hasn't been any. Of course, they're gonna be up to date with whatever changes, all, especially our textbook vendors as well, up to date with whatever changes are being recommended once the governor gets that report in January.
Okay, so that's something that will definitely, or you will, you and your department will have to dive into and find a, a new compatible testing tool that align with the standards.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure we'll have many opportunities with different vendors coming.
Right. Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Ready. All ready.
Okay, moving on to B, Approval of Piggyback Lee County District ITN Number N-177281RC, Computer Hardware, Software and Services to Issue a Purchase Order to United Data Technologies for six hundred and thirty-seven laptops to replace our Digital Integration Initiative Phase 1 Devices. Dr. Moxley?
Thank you, Mrs. Zork. This is to be part of the refresh, a, a program to refresh devices that were originally purchased. This is through the Florida Digital Classrooms allocation that we get, which is a state allocation in our funding stream. This purchase will allow for the replacement of failing laptops in classrooms across the district. This purchase order is in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And it is refreshed, meaning we're replacing outdated with new, and it's a total of six hundred and thirty-seven laptops.
Okay.
I do recommend approval, I'm sorry.
Move approval.
Okay.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
No ma'am.
No.
Any discussion? Um, let's see. This comes out of millage?
No, this is digital classroom, Florida digital classroom dollars. And that is a, a allocation that's kind of a categorical, if you will, that comes to each school district each year to help with technology.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that? Given that we've been going through a lot of the restricted and unrestricted funds and the categoricals, is there any particular advantage or disadvantage, since this would count as technical and would count as millage, or could, I would think, is there any advantage or disadvantage to which pot that comes out of? If it's the digital or the millage?
I think the Florida digital alloc, classrooms allocation is very restrictive and so we need to use it exactly as it is. And so you use your most restricted first and then move into your more flexible, so that's why that is.
That answers the question exactly, thank you.
Imagine the legislature requiring something and then actually attaching funding to it. So thank you for some funding attached to a requirement.
Okay, any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. F, Approval to Piggyback School District of Volusia County Contract CPT-750N to Purchase 500 Student PCs from CDW-6 for District-Wide Refresh.
This is also a computer refresh. These are student computers and these are not laptops, these are desktops. And it's important, we have both types of computers in our, our district. Most districts do with regards, because you have to address testing and all those other kinds of things. So these desktop computers are going to be refreshed if they are over six years old. And so this is the replacement or refresh for that. These are desktops, the cost will be two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. This is a, the voter millage, or discretionary millage under the technology piece. And I do recommend approval.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Mrs. Justice?
Thank you to the voters for your support in helping us to be able to upgrade technology and keep kids current in classrooms.
Yeah, this, this is not for discussion, but just a, a thought is having been a PC user and a Mac user, my experience is that my Macs last longer than my PCs, sorry. So I know we don't wanna go through.
Do you get a plug from Apple for that?
No, I really did not. No, I really didn't, but no, it's, it's actually because I was thinking about this today. I was using my computer and I was, I actually went back and looked at how old it was because, because it's still functional and it's a 2015 and I'm in 2019 and it's working great. So this is not a discussion to have now and I know it's a lot to switch over at points, but the, my own experience, I am not plugging for Apple, I'm not shilling for, for, for Apple at all. But, but, but it, I have had the experience now that they really last a long time, just saying. If, if at any point we wanna consider some district materials. If she gets a free laptop sent to the district office, we, I think we should all know of that, I'm just saying. I, I just switched myself about ten years ago, but, just saying.
Any further discussion?
Throw eggs at me now.
No, well, I'll take some eggs for ya. I, I agree. I mean, I, I've had one of our Apple laptops since 2012 and it is like brand-new. I mean, it's never crashed, I've never had an issue with the updating of its system. I mean, we.
Never get a virus.
Never get a virus, never get any issues. I mean, it is like, I picked it up on day one. In the long run, though, you, you pay a little bit more upfront. There are educational discounts for, for schools, obviously. And in the long run, you're getting much better quality.
We're both getting iPads in the mail within the next week.
Any, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it up to staff to do the research for what's best for us to purchase.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
I will just let you know that we do have state bids, state contracts, we do all those price comparisons. I, I appreciate both platforms and there's a purpose for both platforms and we have to look at what we're having to run on them and you do all that return on an investment kind of comparison. So we will continue to do our due diligence.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Oh goodness, it's only seven oh six. Okay, we're moving to G, Approval of Three-Year Microsoft School License Agreement Renewal for SHI International.
Yes, board members, this is Microsoft and this is our license agreement for the Microsoft product that we have for our mail and everything else. In your board package, you did have the contract, you did have the agreement, but this happens to be the, the pricing proposal. So the quotation, I guess is the word I'm looking for. So the quotation sheet I noticed was not in your board packet, I wanted you to have it. It doesn't change anything about the contract, it's just an added piece of information. This particular license does provide the district with a cost savings over purchasing each software title individually. So if you think about your email, you know, we each have an individual license, but as a district, we can get a district license, it is a cost savings. This is coming out of our, our millage since it is a technology item and it is a cost to the district of two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. And if, we need to do this for our whole Microsoft Office suite of services on each of our systems.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second. Just to make up for the apple thing. I have to speak up. Okay, Mrs. Justice?
No ma'am.
No.
I would actually like to ask a question. When you purchase software like this, especially with Microsoft, although I, I don't know if you have any issues with Bill Gates. No, okay. I do know that they have offered employees also discounts for having that software at home or getting that. Is this available with this purchase?
Yes, I'm seeing Mr. McDonald say yes. I, I knew from past experience, and certainly if you wanna ask Mr. McDonald any questions, we can do that. I know from past experience, they have been very good about, you can show identification and you get a discount that way. But yes, that, that has been in effect.
How, how do we put that out there for employees?
Please, please, might as well.
Because some people aren't aware of that.
Absolutely.
That you can get Microsoft Suite at Home on your home computer if you're a school board employee.
Thank you very much, board members, Dr. Moxley. In Microsoft Office, every employee and every student in our district gets five free licenses of Microsoft Office. All you have to do is sign into Office 365 and at the upper right-hand corner, it says Install Office. You can install it on your home computer, you can install it on laptop, you can install it on a secondary device, up to five copies per person, which means if you had a principal with two children. means if you had a principal with two children, he has fifteen copies he can install in various locations. So that's without purchasing anything, that's part of this contract.
And, and is that something maybe that our information officer can put out there again for us?
We can, we can.
Yeah, because I think that's a really nice, um, benefit that we offer, that is offered to us anyway.
Yes.
And some people don't even know they can do it, it's that easily done.
Right, absolutely. We'll take care of that.
Sorry, is anything to our YouTube channel?
No problem, no problem.
We can, we can do-
We'll get to YouTube, we're on that, we're Microsoft, now we're getting to that.
We can certainly do that, and that, that is, that is a, a very good piece that's included here, um-
And that's Macintosh as well, so.
I was gonna say, but can I do it on my Mac?
Yes.
Thank goodness.
Can I just, uh, just for a point of clarification, when you say that they just have to sign in?
Correct.
What are we talking about? Sign in on the website of Microsoft, just so that people are aware?
Absolutely. WWW dot office dot com, it pops up and says please sign in, you would put in your email address, your password, your district password, and up in the upper right-hand corner, when you have the splash screen with all of your icons, right in the upper right-hand corner, it says install Office, it downloads a tiny little file, when you click it, it's saying setting up, installing the software, all done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Moving to H, approval to Piggyback School District of Volusia County Contract CPT dash seven five zero N for Microsoft Premier Support Agreement Renewal, Renewal from CDW dash six.
Yes, board members, um, and I'm going to probably not explain this as eloquently as Mr. McDonald explained it to me, but I'm going to give it my best try. This particular item is, uh, the purchase of twenty-four seven, meaning twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, prioritize support to our IT staff for Microsoft Classroom Application Support, as well as our cloud services, and, and when you think about our whole system out there, if something were to happen and it would go down, it is sure nice to have a backup system in the cloud and not at, you know, at, not at the same place. So, you know, again, this is a safety, um, precautionary thing, and does provide the technical training so that we can stay up and running since we are serving students with classroom applications and our teachers. There is, uh, technical training, there's deployment of assistance and locally hosted services. This is, uh, cost of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. We will fund this through the special, uh, millage under the techno- technology area, and I do approve this, or recommend this approval.
Okay, need approval?
Move approval.
Second. Mrs. Justice?
No, ma'am.
Any discussion, ladies?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Moving on to I, approval of Piggyback Florida N A S P O Value Point Dell AR six zero two to purchase backup recovery system from Presidio?
Yes, this, this, uh, is continuing with that same concept of backup and recovery system, and, you know, when you think about coming into hurricane season, if something were to happen and go down here with our servers here, we would have that backup system and recovery so that we would be able to continue and get right back up operating. You never want to have that all in one location, you always have your backup servers. This, uh, does this, and this is that mission-critical data recovery system, um, in the event of any, um, it could be fire, flood, it could be any catastrophic, uh, type of situation that we have, and we would be able to replace our system and be right back up and running. I think, um, this is something that is mission-critical, uh, in, in this, uh, arena. Um, this is a purchase of a hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and one cent. This is a millage purchase, and I do recommend approval.
Okay.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Who was the second?
I'm sorry.
Baron Borg.
Somebody.
Do you like to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we didn't have a discussion, do we want a discussion? This is our third meeting of the day.
Yes.
Got a text that our live stream's not working. I don't know if there's-
It's not working.
It's not. Is there anything we could do?
There's nothing they can do, but the board meeting will be, um, the board meeting will be posted-
On the website tomorrow under the school board page, or they can still watch it on Comcast or AT&amp;T, and I have two updates on social media as well. So the Comcast channel is, um, Comcast twenty-eight and AT&amp;T Channel ninety-nine, they can still watch on those channels.
Okay.
So we're still being recorded, we're just not being live?
Correct, you're still being recorded, it's just not being livestreamed on YouTube, and it will be posted, uh, tomorrow on the school board page.
Okay, thank you.
There's a link on social media to get directly to that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are moving to J, approval to Piggyback School District of Volusia County Contract CPT dash seven five oh N for purchase of nine hundred and ninety-five classroom phones from CDW dash six for district-wide refresh.
CDW dash G.
It's a G.
I'm sorry.
Board members, this is replacement, um, phone equipment in teachers' classrooms, so this is a replacement for handsets for aging hardware. This will provide, um, upgraded phone systems, it will include speakerphone access, and we do believe this, um, also increases, um, just communication and a world of safety and, and all kinds of access to communication. We can never have enough communication, this is addressing that. The cost impact is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. It is a, uh, special millage, um, purchase, and I do recommend approval.
Okay, I need a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Do you like to speak to your motion?
Only to reiterate what Dr. Moxley said about communication, um, we were in a security meeting this morning, and it was, again, reinforced the importance of our ability to communicate effectively and efficiently and safely, so I, uh, just appreciate our bringing forward something that enhances that, because it's, it really does all tie to school safety.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate we're upgrading to a system that's going to correlate with others, so it's important that we're doing that. Um, the other note I want to make is that, um, with approval of this, we've just approved eight hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents towards our millage, so I'd like to say thank you to the taxpayers, um, because all those items came out of that millage. We do have money left, because I asked. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, you understood where money is coming from, and I'm, I appreciate you always saying where it's coming from, so thank you.
Me too.
Mrs. Rosario, comment?
Um, I, I don't know if it wa, if it is just a, um, maybe the fact that we're at the end of the year and we're preparing for next year, um, but this is the first time since I've been on the board that I've seen so much come out of millage, so I'm actually kind of happy about that, you know, be, I, I, I'm not sure if it's been, um, by your directive or, you know, I don't know how it is, but it's all coming out, and it's good. It's good that we're using it, it's good. Again, thank, I'm thankful for the taxpayers for this, for entrusting us to be able to use it exactly as we have intended to use it, so I appreciate that.
I need to give credit to the staff, because they've been working diligent to make things happen on behalf of the staff and students in Indian River, so thank you to the team.
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. No, I, the, um, typically toward the end of the year, technology does do a good job of bringing us a lot of different upgrades that they work on over the summer, so, um, I know that they probably started working on this back last September, correct? So, thank you. All right, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. I move into K, approval of Piggyback Agreement in accordance with Palm Beach County School RFP sixteen C dash zero zero two Q for banking services. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, this item is for our comprehensive banking services for the district. Um, as you know, we have a bank account, we utilize those services just like every, everybody does, and for each of our schools, they have a bank account. Um, we, uh, this is to authorize that, and, um, when you think about the school's internal accounts, all those, the, the banking process, this agreement actually is a decrease in fees, and we like to see that. The fees, uh, used to be one thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents per month. This, uh, action will reduce those fees to eight hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents per month, so we're excited about that, and, um, you will see an overall savings of five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cents per month. We also will see interest on excess balance not covered by the fees. This will be effective June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and will expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, so it is a multi-year contract. I do recommend approval.
Okay, you have approval.
I'll second.
Mrs. Baron Borg, second. Mrs. Justice?
Use great work by the finance team in bringing this forward and the reduction in fees, and, I mean, it's fantastic.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's always great to be able to vote on something where we're just gonna save money, and, um, appreciate you guys doing that, so appreciate it, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Uh, just another, um, comment, I mean, um, already a week, you've been here, Dr. Moxley, maybe? A little more than a week, two weeks?
Two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks, um, and we have potentially saved, or hopefully will be saving, a, a little bit more than, uh, a million, one point four million dollars going to school, um, wide average instead of class size average, and another five hundred dollars a month potentially in this savings, so, um, I'm happy to see the savings on behalf of the district.
We have a wonderful finance department, and, and Kim Copland is, Copman is in the audience, and I thank her for her hard work and her team.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, approval of Resolution twenty twenty dash oh one to adopt the Student Crime Watch Program. Dr. Moxley?
Bless you.
Yes, um, board members, this is a resolution that is required by statute. We, uh, do all the items that are required in statute, like the Student Crime Watch Program, if you see something, say something campaign, the Fortify Florida Program. Um, this is, is a mechanism to allow students and community to anonymously relay information if there is a potential unsafe or harmful, um, activity, and, um, the last part of that statute is to have the board adopt a resolution, so that is being presented to you tonight, um, and I recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion?
Good to see us complying with statute.
Any other discussion? No. Um, board members, this is actually a roll call, so I will go down the list. Mrs. Baron Borg?
Yay.
Mrs. Rosario?
Yay.
Dr. Schiff?
Yay.
Mrs. Justice?
Yes.
Mrs. Zork?
Yes.
Okay. Five zero. Okay, that concludes our action agenda. We're gonna move on into our superintendent's report. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, board members, I just have a few items that I want to, uh, call to your attention and to the public's attention. You know, on June third, we, uh, started our mobile cafes, they are back on the road, and I want to remind everybody, if you go to our website, you'll be able to see there is a schedule there. This was so successful last year, and I don't know whether anybody highlighted, but last year, the mobile cafes served over eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-six meals to our community, so that's pretty significant, and so we know we're off to a great start, and I just want to remind people that are out there, I think it's really, really neat to see the students, uh, when the bus pulls up, that they're able to eat lunch outside on the benches, that are very bright and colorful, and they could dine under the, under the shaded awning, it's just a wonderful community event, and to the team that, uh, got that going, and to our, uh, staff that get that mobile cafe out there, I really appreciate that, and again, wanted to remind you to go to the website. Summer school is up and running, we have third grade reading camp at Osceola Magnet School and Liberty Magnet School. We have a hundred and twenty students in third grade reading camp, and that is off and going until June the twenty-eighth, so we have a couple more weeks. Our secondary, uh, summer programs are running at Oslo Middle School and Sebastian River High School, and we have three hundred students participating in that, so we're thrilled to have our students in our schools, learning, and we know academics are continuing throughout the summer. Um, Step Into Kindergarten is going, voluntary pre-K programs are up and running, and we have our Exceptional Student Education Extended Year, and again, there is a parent academy for our kindergarten, um, students as well, and so, again, lots and lots of activities during the summer, so we can get readiness and a good foundation, uh, going for that. I am very pleased to recognize and to have attended the GED Graduation Program at Treasure Coast Technical College, where we recognized twenty-two, um, GED student graduates, and to hear their stories and know that, um, that they achieved their high school completion, um, and, um, embraced the challenge and overcome a lot of obstacles, I just really commend, and it was just a, a real honor to be in their presence and to celebrate with them. I will be, um, Thursday and Friday at the FSBA and FADS, uh, meeting, um, in Tampa. I will bring back lots of information on the legislative updates, uh, we'll be talking a lot about, um, Senate Bill seventy thirty. Um, I look forward to getting a lot more detailed information. Um, I, I believe we have a good firm foundation, um, in that, um, Senate bill and the, the implications or implementation of that. I also will be working with, uh, FADS on our school board training, uh, the roles and responsibility, and I will bring you back all that information, so we'll have that ready for our next workshop or work session. I also was, uh, made aware that we are a member of the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, um, that is, uh, there is going to be a meeting in Tampa Thursday morning, I will represent the district for that, and then I will get on their schedule, because I know they meet monthly, and I'm very familiar with that organization, um, and the sharing and the networking that goes on. Mrs. Baron Borg, you did talk about the safety, fire safety reports, I wanted to add a comment to that, because I did go through and look at where we are with that, and, um, I too did, um, see a lot of some common things there, and we will be working with the schools, because I do want to make sure that while our inspections come at different intervals, I believe that, uh, monthly principals need to be following up, and, and I'll walk those schools, I'll be starting school visits next week. Um, I don't have a full week of school visits, but I'll be starting that process, and we'll walk the campuses, and I, I, I'm glad to have those reports now, so that I can be familiar and be walking that, uh, campus with the school principal, so I did want to follow up regarding your, um, um, item there. And, uh, board members, thank you for a very productive day. I feel we had a lot of work that was on the table, we accomplished everything we set out to do, um, and it's just a pleasure to work with you as we do the work of this district, so thank you for a good day.
Thank you. We do not have any items on, uh, discussion, so we're gonna move into school board member matters. Would you like to start first, Mrs. Justice?
I'd just thank you to Dr. Moxley and staff for working so hard over the past few weeks, uh, getting to know each other and collaborating, it's much appreciated. Thank you for putting students first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I was gonna mention the Treasure Coast Technical College GED graduation, but I think you said it all, um, but really moving and inspiring. I, I actually kind of wanted to bug out and not go, and I'm so glad I didn't do that, um, because it was, of all of the graduations I went to, it was one of the most moving, and, and I'm really glad I went, so. Um, also want to thank, and, and she's just left the room, um, Ms. Copman and the finance staff and others who have been working on holiday weekends and on weekends to prepare information for us, so that we have budget information, and we have, um, the, the class, like, all of the information that we've gotten, I know, comes, comes, no pun intended, at a cost, um, because people are working, you know, many additional hours to produce that, and, um, I am so grateful to be able to make decisions with data in hand, so I thank everybody who has gone over and aboard, and Ms. Copman who, uh, left the room and everybody else, um, thank you for that. Makes an enormous difference in our ability to get our work done, so thank you on that. Um, thank you, Dr. Moxley, for an incredibly productive couple of weeks, and for your availability, um, kind of at all times, you know, we've had, um, some late conversations, some long conversations, but I really appreciate how you have really hit the ground running, and your availability both for the work of the district and for the board, and what I think that's producing for us moving forward, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rosario? Um, if, if you haven't, um, had a chance to listen to our board discussion today, um, I'd like to, um, piggyback off of-
piggyback off of a presentation earlier from Mrs., oh goodness, Joanne Pagano, Mrs. Joanne Pagano, and the collaboration that she has worked with the Vero Beach Museum of Art and students in our district who have autism. That actually falls at a great time to see that video, because today, we talked about our partnership with the Vero Beach Museum of Art and all of their efforts to reach out to children in Indian River County, especially with regard to our students, students within our district. So I was just happy to see that video today unexpectedly. Shanti Sanchez is the School Youth and Community Impact Programs Manager. She reached out to board members to ask for a letter of support, so that they are able to continue their grant funding, and so they're kind of building their portfolio in order for them to receive grant money so that they can continue in these efforts, and I was, I'm very pleased. So if anyone has an opportunity to go on to the Vero Beach Museum of Art website and participate in any of the programs that they have, there is one in particular that happens on Saturdays that is free to the public. It's not every Saturday, I think it's once or twice a month. Of course, their website has more details, but it's programs like those that they give for students in the arts, creative arts, that really make a difference in our community. I have benefited, my son specifically has benefited from, from all that they do there, and it's my pleasure to offer the letter of support, and I want to thank board members for supporting that, their efforts in this as well, and continuing our partnership. I wanted to congratulate the Treasure Coast Technical College graduates, I want to offer my apologies for not being there, but I work on Wednesday nights, so that was pretty difficult for me to, to split myself, and, but nonetheless, my heart goes out to them, and I know that they are, they're well-deserved, congratulations is due. I want to be able to talk about the insurance things that are happening. I, I can't talk about all the details, obviously, because we don't know it. I, I am deeply moved by the concerns of, I did not realize there were two hundred employees, but I am, I'm deeply concerned, and I, I just wanted to say to those who received the letter, please know that I am personally, with the direction of Dr. Moxley, of course, and district employees, looking forward to a resolution on this somehow, if we can get one, that will be of some relief to you all. I, I don't know anything about it yet, but hopefully we'll be able to figure this out. And lastly, I just wanted to make kind of like a shout-out for citizens to be on the lookout, essentially, for board members to collaborate and really streamline our procedures and our practices at board meetings. We did also talk about that today at our discussion session, you're free to watch the video so that you can kind of hear all that we talked about with regard to citizen input in order for us to, in order to ensure that we are following our, our policies, we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we need to do for you all in that area, and particularly with public participation at our meetings, so. That should be up and coming, I know our board chair is going to work hard. I want to thank Mrs. Zork for being the chair, and for leading us here, and leading the meetings, and I know it is not easy. I don't know if citizens actually know there is much more that goes on behind the scenes for a board chair than there is to just sit up here and hit the gavel, or, you know, read from a, a script. There's much more that's involved on her part that we do not actually physically do, meetings and so on and so forth, and I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for hearing the voice of the citizens with regard to some of these things, so I appreciate your work and your dedication for this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'd just like to say thank you to the many contributions and donations that are continuously made to our schools and to our school district, I appreciate that. Dr. Moxley, well done on handling many curveballs.
You're still in the batter's box, and we appreciate the fact that you took over the
batter's box. I'm sure that more curveballs will come, but you're handling them with grace, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you to the staff members and faculty that have hung in there through all these changes, and it's tough going through this much change, and it's tough for everybody involved, but I think we're gonna come out in the end, and, and things are gonna continue to rise, not just start to rise, but continue to rise, and go in, in that same direction. Thank you to the board today on transparency. Like I, like Mrs. Rosario said, please watch today's workshop. You'll see that, you know, all the proposals I brought forward, you were all excited about, so that was really nice, everybody liked that. But what was great is that we're looking at moving to board docs, putting it on our website, which is a huge jump into the twenty-first century, if you don't know. Little people like me don't know how to find things on the website, so, and I thought I was tech savvy. So I think that once you see board docs and you see what it can do for us, I think it's gonna help us tremendously. And again, that GED graduation was beyond moving, I think I was in tears throughout the ceremony, so it was, it was a wonderful thing to, to be involved in, so I appreciate that.
Did you?
Yeah, I just want to add a real quick thing, which Mrs. Baron Borg's book that I'm eyeing over there is open to. I want to thank, again, Dr. Moxley, for putting the budget document in, putting an easy-to-read budget into our documents so that people can see that. You know, we haven't had that that way, in a way that's so clear exactly what was allocated, what was spent, what's remaining, and where we are. So I want to thank you for that, because I think that's part of increasing the transparency, and particularly when it comes to finance, that's an area that's easy to misinterpret or for people to have concern about where money is and how it's being spent, so I really appreciate you adding that, which I'm suspecting is, is the beginning of a process that you'll continue to do so that the finances are transparent. So I just want to add a thanks for that.
All right. I want to, want to thank everyone that is here tonight, it's seven thirty-seven, and it's a summer, summer night, so I appreciate everyone that always comes to these meetings and participates and, and is engaged in these conversations that we have. I do want to say that we are, the dynamics of this board over the last couple of weeks, I can really sense that we're heading in the right direction, and I, I appreciate the compliments that I received as being chair, but also, you know, I, I appreciate my, our vice chair that we have, that is always there, if I'm not available, she's there to pick up what needs to be handled, so I appreciate Mrs. Justice, because she does bring a lot, Mrs. Justice, one thing I've learned about her is she really researches things thoroughly, so I, I always learn during our meetings and during our workshops, I always learn from her whenever she's speaking, and so I, I do want to say that.
Thank you.
So I feel like we have a good team, I feel like we're on the right path, and it was a long day again, but it was a very productive day, and I want to say, just having the budget information that we need to be able to make decisions, especially in our closed session yesterday, it was just, it was very nice to be able to know the decisions that, in the direction we want to go, we're going in that direction based off of valid information, and I, I appreciate finance that spent the whole weekend, and Dr. Moxley who spent the weekend preparing for that closed session on a Monday. But anyways, I just want to say thank you to the board members, we had a very good day, and thank you for just positive collaboration. Moving on, let's see, we have superintendent closing, do you have anything, Dr. Moxley?
I just want to wish everyone a, a great evening and things for a great day, and I know several people are ready for vacations that have plans, so we wish everyone safe, safe vacations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-nine.